Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the Shelburne Planning Commission on Thursday, July 26. I'll call this to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor? Any -- well, I guess, any discussion about it before we favor it? Someday, I'm going to get this down.
I'll rush.
All right. I'll be right at the end of my three years, right?
You know, anything I would ask, if just we make sure that it's obvious who's making the motion, second, because Mary Ann is not here. I wasn't sure she wouldn't be here. She'll be doing it from the tape, so we just want to make sure that it's obvious on the tape.
Sure, yeah. So that's fair. So moved by Andrew, seconded by Dick. If there is no discussion on any changes to the agenda, then, in that case, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is approval of the minutes from our last meeting. I'm sorry, I do get caught up in the whole legislative process, but -- so I'll take a motion to approve. And so it's a motion, a second, we discuss it, and then it's all in favor. I messed that up the last time. So --
So moved.
All right. So moved by Dick.
Second.
Seconded by Susanna. Any discussion?
Jason, I'm not sure if during the meeting or if the meeting had adjourned when I brought up last time that there were some residents who had brought issues to the table over the course of the last six months that I feel like we should try to address as a group prior to going to our open -- our open meetings. And that wasn't included in the minutes, so perhaps either it wasn't caught or it was after we had adjourned.
I remember hearing it.
So I just want to add that to the minutes.
Sure.
Yeah, as long as you're sure it happened in the minutes.
I'm reasonably sure.
Yeah, I definitely remember talking about it. I don't recall if it was before or after.
Yeah, so I just wanted to --
Sure.
So for the purpose of the minutes, just --
To add a comment that you made about incorporating --
Past remarks from the public and make sure we address those prior to our open sessions in August.
Must just like that point on?
And I believe there was a gentleman from New Village Farm.
Some of those would really be more zoning issues, or they potentially are zoning issues and --
That's fine, right. And we could just put a period on them and have it be over. I just didn't want to leave anything dangling so that people felt like they had to come back to the open sessions to readdress them.
Yeah, and I was trying to think through that stuff as well. So, I mean, there were definitely some situations where people came in and what they were ultimately looking for was zoning changes. And as far as the plan goes, we would just need to make sure that those concerns would be covered in what our recommended actions are for approaching them.
Exactly, right.
Yeah, okay.
Can I just suggest wording so that there's no question for Mary Ann because she would like it to be specific?
Sure.
So as part of an amendment to other business correspondence, Susanna commented that the commission should address comments by members of the public at the planning commission meetings over the last six months prior to the open sessions. That's really going to only be tonight.
Right.
If possible.
Well, and I would also say maybe if there's -- or if there's an efficient way to get a list of what those concerns might have been so that we could just at least have them logged.
Right.
So that we can show -- I mean, I know that they're in meeting minutes historically. I don't know if there's an easy way to extract that.
Not an automated way, but not an onerous way either.
Because I think, for the most part, when people came in and had concerns, I know we had the Bay Road contingent in here several times, and we went through and made sure that their concerns were incorporated into the plan.
Right.
And I, yeah, I was trying to think of examples where we would have heard concerns that didn't get addressed in some way, but it would be a good refresher to make sure we're not missing anything.
Just to make sure.
Yeah.
And I only started in January, so there may have been some prior to my being here.
Right. Well, November, December was pretty late.
And January.
And January. Okay. So I got that comment, Dean. Thank you as well. And Mary Ann will hear it. Okay. Any other comments on the notes, meeting minutes? I actually didn't have any this time.
I didn't have any.
And Dick made the motion to approve the minutes, and Susanna seconded, right?
Yes. So then, in that case, all in favor is the meetings published with the addition under "other business as discussed"? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. Okay. So moving on, any disclosures relating to any potential conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none. Then we have "open to the public". If there are any items that are not going to be discussed on the agenda, are there any comments or anything related to anything that we're not going to be talking about? Okay. So then, oh, yeah, sure.
My name is Peggy Minier. Is there one just like that?
It's --
We got mine.
Yeah, it's more for the cameras. It's for the audio on TV, yeah.
We were here two weeks ago. We were revisiting an issue on our subdivision, and we were just wondering what the latest was on that.
That's item six on the agenda, though.
Oh, he said "open to the public", I'm sorry.
It is open to the public, but then, if to discuss anything that's not on the agenda tonight -- And we do have --
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't read that far.
And I will just say, as an introduction, since we're going to be getting into that in a bit anyway, is that after you were here the last time, we wanted to make sure that we had some time on the agenda this evening so that we can have the commission get a bit more familiar with the issue. And there's a few different angles to it. So I wasn't really anticipating to have a solution this evening, but it's more to get a discussion going, so it's good that you're here in case there's any additional comments. So that's -- all right, so then we can just dive in. The first topic is that zoning request, right? Yeah. So with that, how -- so, Dean, you had included history from the last time this was discussed in 2014?
I did. I gave you some background material, not all of it, but some of what I thought was most relevant, including the language that was almost the consensus language. And then I described some of the concepts, the three concepts that were being kicked around before the group reached that consensus. In your packets, there was a memo, and on the second page of that memo, you'll see the header "2014 Concept to Modify Developable Area Requirements in the Rural District", and the underlined text is what would be -- which would be added to the zoning regs under that proposal. So in the section of the rural zoning regs that lists the density requirements, wording would be added to the paragraph that addresses single-family homes that basically says it's one per five acres, except under things that qualify this Section 330.1(c). And then we would add one, 330.1(c) that addresses this issue by saying that when you're dealing with a lot that's less than 15 acres, then you just use five acres total, not five acres of developable land. So it would address the concern of the Miniers by changing the regs so that the regs essentially say you need five acres of developable land, except when you're subdividing a parcel that's less than 15 acres, in which case it only has to be five acres of land. That's what that sort of almost consensus text from 2014 would accomplish.
And maybe to facilitate discussion, because in reading that and reading the rest of it, maybe just an open floor, I don't know if -- Dick, I know you had some thoughts around this.
That wasn't the issue that we voted on, though.
That is one that came close to being adopted, but failed.
The one we voted for that tied was the one that I had sent you. It was between -- well, the one I replied on Thursday. They had -- we had -- the motion was 10 acres or less than 15 could be subdivided.
Well, less than 15 acres, Dick, if it's less than 10, it can be subdivided anyway.
Allows a two-lot subdivision. Right, if it's less than 10.
That was what we had voted on, and it tied, so it didn't pass.
So I guess from having reviewed the material, and I mean, if this can be easy, we make it easy, but is this approach inconsistent with anything else?
I would like to see us continue forward and do this, but also let's do the PUD option and fix the PUDs. And I did bring Williston's new regs in, and they're quite interesting. They deal with pretty much this, and I think this is -- they've just approved it. So there's quite a bit here that we should probably take a look at.
Right, and I mean, given the time that we have for tonight, I don't know, unless there are some highlights.
It was a handout, it's not necessary.
I have a question, sir. Did you ever go that -- is there any way we could hear what you guys are saying, or is that the poor guys?
Sure. Yeah.
So maybe people, if you want to get -- love the mics a little bit more.
Sure.
So, Dick, do you have a strategy in mind for how to sort of thread this needle?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you able to hear me?
I can't, please.
Yeah, okay.
She has a problem.
Sure.
I would like to -- well, I'd like people to read this before next meeting, but ideally, I think we should move so that this goes to a PUD. All developments go to PUD, and then we don't have to worry about 10 to 15 acres. And by doing that, we could adopt something similar to this. What Williston has done is they create smaller lots, and they put 75% of their lots into open land. I'm not proposing that, but that's what they do. And I think a proposal such as that would work. Also, you know, smaller building lots clustered together closer to the road. And an option, another option that some people might like is to sell the development rights to the Route 7 corridor. And I was thinking they would be selling five-acre lots, and we would have to make it attractive because lots are worth a little bit less, I think, in a corridor than they are out there right now, so we'd have to do, give like one and a half units or something, or possibly two, I don't know, that's something for discussion. But I think that would be a viable way of maintaining a rural area by keeping the development rights to the property and transferring the units to where we want them.
So what I'm hearing, then, because, I mean, I think you're right, this is stuff that should be reviewed first, and I don't know that -- I don't want this to get too carried away beyond what was in the packets. Is the -- so what we're -- what's proposed, or what was proposed previously as well, is having a clause for parcels less than 15 acres. I don't disagree. I mean, the other things that you're talking about, I think, are things that should probably be in the proposed comprehensive plan in terms of investigate what you were just saying, the options around selling development rights to the Route 7 corridor and clustering closer to roads, which part of that is coming out of the whole hamlet discussion as well, which is a topic in the plan, recommended action to be working toward. That's -- I don't believe that's going to be a short-term thing. I'm assuming that's a lot of discussion involved. Would the less-than-15-acre clause be a reasonable interim step?
I voted for it last time, so I guess I'd have a hard time saying no.
All right.
But I would, I was encouraging that we actually set a timetable to do this other stuff, because I think it's important that we get this done. So I don't say they have to be tied together, but I would like to see us have a legitimate timetable to address that, because this is going to open up a significant number of lots.
Right, and that's why I'm hesitant. When this was brought up a couple of weeks ago, or a couple of meetings ago, the reason we had this on here was to give commissioners more exposure to the issue, especially to those who weren't involved in the previous iterations. Based on the information we have in the packet is more on what was discussed previously with the going forward with the less-than-15 acres would solve the problem as it originally came up. The PUD thing, I think, just gets into a lot more drawn-out discussion, and we already know that August is pretty tied up.
Right. I don't think the PUD is that complicated, though. If we just required the PUD to go in line with this under 15 acres and just require if someone does that to do a PUD, to automatically do a PUD while you pass the same, just as an add-on to this.
And maybe that's something I --
Which gives the DRB the ability to --
You have to go through site plan.
Right, so does that --
Yeah.
I don't want this to sound wrong, but does that create more bureaucracy in the process?
Well, but on the side of -- yes, I mean, it creates another layer of approval for the applicant. However, the applicant is, you know, getting sort of a go-round around the purpose of the zoning, which is to, you know, limit -- we're trying to limit development in the rural areas. I think, you know, that's sort of the starting point of all of this. Right now, we have five-acre zoning, which doesn't sound like a recipe for limiting development. And so, over the years, because there was not the political appetite to go back to increasing the zoning size of parcels, instead, it was developed to subtract the developable area out as a way to kind of use natural resource protection, as a way to control some of the impacts of growth. And so that's been the tricky thing, and that's the sort of, you know, kind of catch-22 situation that the Miniers have found themselves in. And so we don't want lots that have resources, sensitive resources, to be developed, but if they must be developed, then it's really important that we have a lot of control over how that happens, so we get a good outcome. So I think what Dick is suggesting is the PUD approach is a way to get that kind of oversight. So, because otherwise, if you just have a by-right ability to develop a five-acre lot, there's no control over how you do that. So, you know, like a normal five-acre lot that doesn't have any resource issues, you can just do whatever you want with that. So we're trying to find something in between, no, you can't, and yes, you can, but with care. So I think, is that, am I explaining that pretty well?
Yeah, pretty well. Yeah, right on the nail, yeah.
Good, okay. So I would support that, because, you know, I think that we have to consider the big picture. Are we incentivizing by taking lots out of circulation that are already kind of on the small side? Are we incentivizing people to just go and develop ever-more, larger parcels, you know, and encouraging people to sort of think along those lines, rather than encouraging development where it already is located? So it's sort of like, you know, getting towards the hamlet approach, which would be like another iteration of that, an even more dense iteration of that.
By doing that, you can eliminate the 15%. It becomes immaterial, because --
15%?
The 15% slopes.
Oh, right.
Because the DRB says you can't, this is where you have to put the house. If you're going to do it, great, but this is how you have to do it, and there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. You can't just put it anywhere you want.
The complication, so would that happen prior to the subdividing and selling off, or after?
Before, before the subdivision would occur. I didn't include Section 340, but it is what immediately follows the section that I did include, and that had been discussed the last time. Section 340 is where the zoning regs currently say you may do a PUD if you want to, you may. And then it goes on to say, any subdivision that creates more than five must be a PUD. And what Dick is saying, I think, is this would be changed to a planned unit development shall be required in the rural district for any subdivision, essentially, for any residential subdivision.
Right.
And that would, that would mean that if the Miniers, if you did a zoning change that said it can be five acres, but it must be a PUD, then it means the subdivision process that they go through will be a more protracted process than a simple, what's so-called minor subdivision. It would be a PUD review, which is more involved.
And that's, I guess that's where I was getting at, or what I was getting at, is, I mean, if more involved means that that would include a site visit, and we're not talking about a large volume of these things that wouldn't overburden the DRB, that's one thing. But I mean, if it's something where this is fairly regular, or it's more than just adding a site visit into the process.
It is a bit more than adding a site visit to the process, because a simple splitting of a lot, let's assume that it's not getting captured as, you know, let's assume it's just a splitting of a lot, two lots where there was one. That's a minor subdivision, and it takes two steps. Once a project becomes a PUD, it's automatically considered a major subdivision, which means three steps. The standards that are applied are the same, but it, there's a final revisiting, there's a revisiting at the end. And there are some additional requirements that are specific to PUDs, the stuff that Kate's talking about, but it's both carrot and stick. The carrots are, you can make the house sites on small lots. So if we're talking about, you know, subdividing a 14-acre parcel into two, the houses can be on lots that are an acre or half an acre, and then the rest of it can be open space on a separate parcel, or maybe it's incorporated into one of them. But it allows the house sites to be on smaller lots. It allows you to bend some of the rules regarding setbacks and things like that. So there are pluses and minuses, but it takes longer. It's not a, it's not a short, you know, do it over, do it in a couple of months and you're over.
Dean, you were nice enough to put together a map to show what the implications would be town-wide beyond just this one property.
Yes.
Can you share that?
Yeah, and this is, I gotta just grab it here. This is a map. Just have to remember where I am here. So I took the data that had been used to generate the list that was mentioned in the memo and linked it to a map, basically, and this is a little blurry, but I basically asked the computer, "Show me the lots that are between 10 and 15 acres, and then categorize them." And we see down, down on the south side in red, that's the Miniers parcel. And of those lots, if we were to drop the developable area concept, would it make a difference in terms of their ability to subdivide, or could they already? And if it's in yellow, it would make a difference. If it's in gray, it doesn't make a difference, because in theory, just based on area, they could already subdivide. Like my note up here says, though, I'm not making, I haven't done the research to tell you whether, and in some cases, I know. This is Pheasant Hill. I'm pretty sure, subject to Act 250, and my strong suspicion is, is that there's a covenant that says there will be no further subdivision. So just because it's yellow doesn't mean it really could be subdivided.
So what would be really interesting would be to look at that data and have it overlaid with where scenic resources and conserved areas are, and how does that impact those areas, you know what I mean?
Well, I mean, I can, I can't overlay it on the fly. This just happens to be something I anticipated showing. These, when you say "conserved areas," this is a, this is the conserve lands database. So yellow, Vermont Land Trust, the pink, town-owned, pink over here, this is also showing wetlands. The area near Shelburne Pond has areas under easement with nature conservancy. I can't, I could maybe show them side-by-side, but I can't lay the other data on it, because I'm not in a GIS right now.
Right, yeah, yeah. But it, I'm just, I think what I'm looking to, for an argument to make is, you know, does this, is this a smart way to increase density, you know, in a way that avoids creating additional impacts to natural and scenic resources, but doesn't result in, you know, I mean, the growth is going to come, right? People want to live here, so we have to figure out where it can go. So if we can use our existing small parcels more efficiently, I think, and get good development outcomes, I think that's worth pursuing.
And seeing that on the map as well, I mean, I would imagine that it's not one of those things where this rule goes in place and then there's a mass rush for everybody wanting to subdivide that would overburden any current system.
So I think you can kind of sort of eyeball it, just, you know, in a very kind of gross way. Thanks, Dean, that's pretty helpful. And, you know, it suggests that these parcels that we are considering allowing this different kind of treatment for are actually not around some of the really sensitive areas.
Well, I should say, this, these are, whoops, the yellow, the left is showing land that has easements.
Yes, it's, the color is unfortunate.
Yeah, well, it's, right, but I just be, you can see that there's a dippled pattern, that's showing wetlands, that's not popping out. It may or may not easily translate over. I mean, in terms of where the resources are, the wetland layer is probably as good an indication of that as anything. Some of these, you know, the lands are conserved because there was an opportunity to conserve them. They're not necessarily telling us the most important ag soils or ag land, but it was --
Right, right, well, I mean, we have to figure out what data we want to use to compare and contrast this with, but I think that's, that's an approach to making an informed decision.
I want to make sure I'm following, though, too. What is the tie-in with conserve lands, wetlands, scenic views? Because that, that would be something, if anybody's going to build, those are things that would be considered anyway, would they not?
Well, you want to, you want to avoid those, you want to avoid impacting those. At the same time, we have some big parcels of land that we would prefer to see stay big parcels of undeveloped land. And the parcels that are in yellow on the map that is underneath the one that Dean is looking through are smaller parcels that are already developed. So if they were subdivided, I mean, they're, they're kind of, you know, they're already developed, they're already --
Well, they may or may not be developed. I didn't screen --
They're parcels, okay.
Yeah, they're parcels.
Okay.
I didn't screen on them having houses on them already.
Okay.
I think in the majority of cases, they are, but I didn't put the house sites on them.
Well, and they're all, they're up against roads and, you know, there's, if we look at this through the lens of how we're thinking about hamlets, it makes some sense, I think.
The other thing, I guess, I'd add after reading it all and the thing about hearing it, is that Dick's solution seems more elegant, because it's kind of comprehensive, whereas the carving out some niche for 10-acre to 15-acre lots seems more like a hack, kind of like a one-off. You know, and just that idea of always kind of like finding some little tweak here You know, and just that idea of always kind of like finding some little tweak here, a little tweak there, you just, you wonder more about what are the unforeseen consequences of that or how it might play out, whereas it seems like the PUD idea is more elegant and gives the control that we as a planning commission have generally been looking for for the rural area, so.
Although for the Minier's, it does need to, to a certain degree, be a combination because the PUD does require five acres of developable, so unless you take it out...
Right.
But we could take the 15% requirement out, which would make them okay, if we...
Right, but I haven't, I, right, that's right, but this map is taking everything out and, and the developable area is not just the slopes, it's slopes, floodplains, wetlands. So I, it would be a different impact if you were just taking out slopes. It's not this map.
Right.
But yes, I understand that you could, you could remove or change the definition of developable area.
And we talked last time about taking slopes out just because that, slopes that are truly undevelopable would be addressed in the review process, whereas this is kind of incorporating slopes that may also be buildable, too. So it's...
Yeah, I mean, as Kate said, this whole idea of using developable area, it was, it was a half-step because there wasn't the political interest in going back to 10 acres.
Right.
I still think the, the wetlands should stay in, in that developable area.
Agreed. No, I think that makes most sense because we know that you can't develop there. Whereas the slope piece, as we talked about two weeks ago, I guess, or two meetings ago, was kind of thrown in there as a way to get around going to 10 acres. But it doesn't really apply to what is truly buildable or not. Whereas the other pieces you're taking out, you're taking out because they are.
Right, but if you're a property owner and you want to build on a corner and the wetlands are four acres away, that, doesn't that seem unfair?
Mm-hmm, I think so.
Meaning if your lot is not big enough because...
Right. When you're not going to be building on the wetlands, you're not going to be impacting the wetlands, you're building actually pretty far away from them.
I guess because, I think of that as undevelopable land in any scenario versus the slope is, truly is developable. So throwing that in as something that can't be developed seems like misnomer.
Right.
It's not true. Whereas, I mean, regardless of how much, you know, how little or how much...
I'm just curious why the slopes were ever in there in the first place. I'm sure somebody with more science background than I do would be able to explain that to me.
The 15% wasn't about the slope, it was more about reducing density. And that's, that planning commission back then was talking, they wanted to go back to 10 acres, but they didn't feel it was saleable, so they came up with this conclusion.
So if we take a more proactive approach, which might include making it easier or incentivizing, finding ways to incentivize growth, putting the growth in the growth area, which is where we want to have it, and then find ways to kind of manage and locate the growth in the rural areas, you know, in, in more desirable ways, I think, you know, that's, that's a different way to approach it, which I think is sort of where we're kind of headed.
Yeah. And I'm honestly relieved to see that this is all pretty spread apart. I don't think you're changing the nature of the town in the unlikely event that all of those would be developed.
Yeah, there's that, and I have less of a concern with overburdening anything because it's not that we're talking about a lot of parcels relatively. So with this discussion, then, would, I, I still think that there's more to it in terms of looking into selling development rights and clustering and that sort of thing, but at a broad view, would moving towards all rural needs to use PUD and removing slope from the developable land, is that a feasible path forward as an interim step?
As a quickie, yeah, yeah, but it's, I'd still like to get into the other part.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah. I just, I'm, you make a really good point that I, I don't want to, I don't want to just keep hacking things as issues come up. There needs to be a long-term sustainable solution, but in this case, I do think that this is something that needs a lot of discussion and we put in a lot of recommended actions to facilitate that discussion. And I just know that that wouldn't be something that happens in the immediate future.
Well, that, I, I feel that that would strike a really good balance between giving the proper amount of oversight over how these parcels develop, but, you know, would, I think be, you know, we're either going to have five acre zoning or we're not going to have five acre zoning.
Right, right.
You know, so...
And as, as you pointed out, it used to be 10-acre zoning, so, I mean, things have changed even with that. Is, so then I guess the next question, Dean, would be to you, is how, how feasible would it be to have some draft language around that concept of all rural becomes PUD, remove the slope? Does that imagine...
It's not that complicated.
So as an interim step, is that something where we could have some language that we could review and vote on and...
Well, your steps would, would have to be something like a draft language and you say, "Yep, that is what we were all talking about," and then someone would have to make a motion to warn the public hearing, and then, and we'd also have to add, have in addition to the text, the bylaw change report. So we'd have those administrative documents ready. Then you'd have to set the date for the hearing, which would be at least two meetings from that date because it's got to be warned.
Right, no, I wasn't trying to trivialize it. The process is going to be the process, but I, I'm just thinking in terms of...
And if I get the language wrong, you correct it and then you warn it with the correction.
Sure, right, but, because that's the kind of thing where if we have stuff, we've talked about it, we've reviewed it, we can review it in the packets ahead of time, even though the next two meetings are going to be open to the public for reviewing the plan, I'm wondering if there's a 15-minute thing that we could carve out just simply to keep that moving forward.
Except to the commission. I mean, if you want to do it at the tail end, after you thanked everybody and rather than trying to do it, I mean, it's up to you, but you could do that.
That's, are there any thoughts either way? Because the, and the, the open to the public sessions are going to be, I mean, there's no guarantees how that's going to work. It could be really busy, it could be lightly attended, we never know.
You're correct.
And I know that I won't be there, but I could feasibly dial in if I needed to for the next one, anyway. But if that's something where we could have some language, review it ahead of time, and if we are all in agreement of it or have some minor tweaks to it, we could at least keep the ball rolling and get to a point where we can put the, put the right paperwork together and warn the hearing?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think it's an issue or a burden to get a proposal redlined with these changes that you've discussed and the bylaw, a draft bylaw change report in your packet for your next meeting. It would then just be a matter of people look at it and if it's, if it's on, great, and if it requires tweaking, you can make those tweaks and then make the motion to prepare the, or direct me to do the warning. And then have a date at that point, it would probably be two month, uh, two meetings from then. If you wanted to do, if you have this discussion at your first meeting in August, then conceivably in your first meeting in September, you could hold the hearing on this.
And then it would be in effect or then it has to go to the planning commission?
No, no, you'd have your hearing and then it goes to the select board. And they have to do the same thing, yeah. So the, the bylaws would not be changed until, you know, Thanksgiving or thereabouts.
And that's why it's, for me, anyway, is if we can keep the process going and if this is an agreed intermediate step, recognizing that we would still have a lot to talk through in terms of how we'd fine-tune it, but this would be an interim way to solve this problem and open it up a little bit.
And it conforms, I think, closely to everything else we want to do in the plan and, you know, like, it's not like we're zigging and then zagging back.
Yeah, to your point, we're not hacking at this point, we're just trying to keep things moving.
Okay.
Do you anticipate a quorum at the next meeting or draft?
That's a good question. I didn't check on that.
I was looking at that earlier.
I knew that it was dicey.
What was that?
Is, you and I aren't going to be here, right?
We won't be, yeah, I was wondering if there'd be a quorum at the next meeting.
What day is that?
August.
Nine.
Is Steve going to show?
Yeah.
Steve?
I will be here.
Yeah, he was marked here, I think he just couldn't be here today. You won't be here?
I will.
Oh, you won't?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this is August 9th?
9th.
9th. Yeah, I think I marked yes.
Yeah.
Should be fine.
Yeah, I, I knew that it was a little tight, but I didn't think that it was dead.
So there'd be at least five and I can call in if needed as well.
Yeah, it's the one after that I know I can't come. We'll be out of town.
I don't know, 23rd?
I'll be to that.
23rd, 4th, something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
I may have an issue there, I'm not sure.
So it looks like, sounds like, that'll be okay.
So there'll be a quorum, we could take 15 minutes to vote on this. We've all just been a part of this discussion, so if there's any other questions or concerns, we could...
What is a quorum, four?
A quorum is going to be four.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you guys, do you guys have any other questions?
Yeah, any questions?
Does that make sense to you guys?
It's pretty unthinkable, the steps, so we could have to do a PUD, obviously, to be able to move forward on this. So I'd appreciate what you're doing.
Sure, yeah, as long as we keep things moving, I think that, that'll, process is process, though.
Yeah.
And any other questions over here? You guys?
Yeah.
No?
All right.
I'd like just to say, my name is Jerry Gillette, doesn't mean a hell of a lot, but when you guys talk about wetland, who's got the knowledge of what wetland is, or how do you define wetland?
That's defined by...
State definition.
Not him, you guys.
Well, we have to fall back on the legal definition that we get from the state, right?
Yeah, this isn't us just making up words.
We don't define wetlands.
But, so, everybody thinks that if you see a cattail, it's wetland, right? But it's not.
Engineers made that.
Yeah, I would look at it based on what the state is considering a wetland.
Also, you have to believe what somebody else says.
Yes, we...
Yeah, okay, that's how you go.
Well, there's a legal...
There's a legal, they're legally regulated by the state, so we have to go by the, what the state says wetland is.
Because you can see wetlands on a hill, you know that, do you?
In some times, yes, there, there can be, yes, there are upland wetlands, yeah.
It does not be in a swamp or in a pond.
Right.
Wetlands could be up on some hill. And I think you're more aware to see that if you're farming or if you're involved with the soil, right?
Yeah, I, I think farmers have a, certainly have a finer grain understanding of that.
We've got, not on our farm, but we have planted corn on other farms, right? Now, you don't plant corn in swamps, and that land is not utilized anymore by us, anyway, and there's cactails growing. And I don't know if you define that as wetlands or how you define it, but anyway. And when I was a kid, on Dorset Street, there's a farm there now, right? We used to hay that whole field. And today they say it's a swamp or a wetland, but we used to hay it, we had no problems. I mean, not with big tractors like we got today, we're, you know.
Right.
I just wanted to make that remark because everybody thinks wetland is, is, is wet because you see a cattail. It isn't. A cattail would grow in a mud hole, right?
Well, and it's also, farmers get to play by a different set of rules than people who want to develop the land. So you can hay a field that the, that the state would say, "Uh-uh, that's a wetland" if you wanted to develop it with houses.
I understand that, I understand that, right? I mean, and we don't go plant crops in a swamp for, you know, in wetlands. First of all, if you can plant it, you probably can't harvest it. And unfortunately, if you could plant, if you, if you, you didn't plant it, in the fall, you can harvest it. There's no such thing as, you know, a guarantee. I mean, look at the summer we had.
Yeah.
I mean, we could, we, we, we could plant, but we have nothing growing. So we're in real good shape now, right? And the rain's too late. All right, thank you.
Can I ask you, if we don't have wetlands and we don't have conserve land on our five acres that we want to develop, would a PUD still be necessary or can we just eliminate the slope, which was the reason why we couldn't develop?
Um, I, you know, I, I don't speak for the, the commission, but, you know, I think we, we have to take a closer look at some of that, but I think right now we're, we're at a point where we've, we feel like we've got a strategy to move forward. But I think in the case of a property like yours, which does have some resources, something that we recognize as resources that we want to be careful around, I think that that may be the, you know, I think the commission is sort of headed in a direction where that may be, yes, you can develop, but with these, you know, conditions. And so it, you know, it would be maybe a little more inconvenient for you guys, but it's, at, at least we're at yes. Whereas, you know, you've come in here for a number of years and the answer has been no way. So, you know...
Well, I ask you because you brought it up.
Yeah.
Resources, what resources would you be looking for on these five acres that were...
Well, I, you know, I'm not familiar with your particular piece of property, but, you know, certainly wet areas are automatically excluded. And then, you know, typical things that are considered resources that we want to protect are, you know, like steep slopes, ledge out croppings, you know, things like that. Maybe there might be some, you know, rare or special species, wildlife corridor, there's a, there's a number of, of things that turn up. And again, I don't know how any of this applies to your specific property, but, you know, and then there are just kind of more, kind of practical issues like, you know, wastewater and wells and access and how all of that stuff happens, so, you know, it's...
It's the first time that I've heard this in detail, anyway.
Yeah, oh, okay.
In years.
So, we all, thank you, by the way.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, and I would like to hand these out.
Look at you, right on camera.
I know, right?
Oh, my goodness.
Two minutes to spare.
Thanks.
Cam, I wasn't watching that. I highlighted stuff for me and then I printed it.
Thank you.
Are these for us?
And now the same?
Yeah, they're all from... I didn't know they were all the same.
Yeah, they're all the same, and they're...
Do you want the one you drew?
I drew on all of them, fortunately, my printer's kind of limited. There's just a bunch of ideas in there.
Yeah.
They actually adopted the slopes.
The what?
They adopted the slopes.
Yeah, and, just to make sure I understood that last question, I, I believe that she was asking if... If the slopes got rid of, would they still need a PUD? And the answer would be yes because we're basically making a change that everything in the rural district needs a PUD. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's a huge step forward.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I mean, is there, in terms of that, the language that would be drafted, is there anything in particular in here that you want to call out that might incorporate into that? Or does this get into the bigger discussion?
I think we all...
You know, now, one, one thing that we should think about with the PUD is what do we mean by that? Because should, you know, this would obviously be a very minor PUD, and, you know, do we, you know, we don't want to make them jump through all the hoops that, you know, the Quinnyaska people have to jump through, for example, you know? I mean, there's, it's important to just make a distinction that this is just a simple subdivision, you know? So, you know, who, who can, is that something that could be approved by the zoning administrator, for example? As, you know, as the site plan could be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator? Or does it have to go before the development review board? You know, we should think about the administrative part of that, too.
DRB does these, or they've done a couple.
Did you, did you get any information from Williston, how they do theirs?
It's all right here, pretty much. Oh, how they do...
Yeah, like who, who adminis, I mean, is it, is it by right if you follow all of these super complicated rules, or is it...
They're online and...
Or do you have to go, is it a conditional use?
Their system is pretty sophisticated because when you're proposing a subdivision in the rural part of Williston, you, your project gets scored, and depending on how it scores will determine how quickly it will advance. So I'm not aware of them having a floor below which you don't have to go through that system because that's, that would defeat the purpose of their system. They, they, they very carefully manage growth in the rural area and that, I think, is everything.
Okay.
But there's a scoring system.
So that's the carrot and stick approach?
Yeah, every year, I believe it, like April, one time each year, they go through the process of scoring the projects that will determine what will actually go forward. And there was a project that is in Shelburne and in Williston a little bit that I remember having some contacts from the proponents for, and I'm pretty sure it was one that did not score highly enough to be advanced in Williston.
I'm concerned a little bit about, not so much our DRB doing it, but that we give them a little better guidance to what we want because I don't think that's the part that's not really clear with the...
Okay, but I, I guess also, I guess I'm concerned about, you know, if they, if they do all the things that they're supposed to, you know, what... Okay, but I guess also, I guess I'm concerned about, you know, if they, if they do all the things that they're supposed to, you know, what, is it a lengthy DRB process to do this, or is this, how do we... It doesn't seem fair to make it as onerous for some, for somebody doing a very small PUD compared to somebody doing five, five units or more, you know? So, like, maybe we need a simple PUD process or something like that.
Yeah, we already have a ton of different types of PUDs in our zoning regulations. One keystone component is, all PUDs are considered major subdivisions, which means that they go through at least three steps. So if, if you're saying a simplified system, I'm thinking, well, one way of doing that, like with boundary line adjustments, they go through a very simplified process, it's one, it's one hearing. But it has to be something that's very, very simple and, and minor to, to do that. PUDs, historically, that issue that you're getting at has been addressed by simply saying, it doesn't have to be a PUD. I mean, their situation historically would have been, if we didn't have developable area, it's a straight subdivision, it's not automatically considered a PUD. So the idea of saying everything's got to be a PUD, but then saying there should be two categories of PUD, one's highly simplified or administrative, well, then I guess I would ask, well, do you really want to make it a PUD?
Well, we want to have, you know, we want to have the, the oversight. I mean, I don't, I don't care how we get that oversight, we just want that kind of oversight. Like, I mean, I would think that, I just did a little sketch here, but, you know, we want something, you know, if, if this is what we're starting with up here, you know, something governed by setbacks right now, right? And the ten acres all of is potentially developable. And if you want to subdivide, you know, then maybe on the subdivided lot, we're creating a building envelope, we're really limiting, because here's the resource that we want to protect, whatever that is. You know, we want to, we want to really be very specific about how that happens. So how do we get that oversight? What's the mechanism?
Traditionally, it's through the DRB, because in the DRB process, you have the applicant and their engineer or their designer, and, you know, there, there are conflicting interests, we have to accept that. And the, the engineer or the designer may be, you know, pushing the envelope, so to speak, saying that, oh, well, this is, you know, this is far enough away from that resource. And when you get to a DRB hearing, the board is going to say, yeah, or they're going to say, no, 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 nothing doing. When you make it administrative, it can, the system can break down when it's one person saying, well, that's, that's too big a building envelope and it's too close, and the engineer's saying, who are you to tell me? So it can be tough to administer unless the regulations are very explicit about the criteria that would be applied. Well, how big is big enough?
So are you saying that in the absence of having regulations that are really specific, it should go, you're saying it should just go through the DRB and let them make the call?
I mean, if you had a list of, you know, five maps that had the features that the person could look at, and that was, those features were precise and accurate, and the reg said, you must avoid these features and you must provide a fifty-foot boundary, and if you overlay them Macardean-style and you've got a clear area, well, that's where your building envelope will go. That'll, that'll be simple and you can administer it. But we don't have those maps.
And we don't.
And what if all of the areas are covered? Or what if them, you know, two or three of them are about the same? Well, then, that's, that's what the DRB process is, is used for typically, because we don't have all of that information in a document in advance for an administrative person to say, this is okay, you meet it or you don't.
Well, what if it, you know, you require, you know, a licensed professional to create a site map that maps all of these things, and they've got to, they've got to sign it, you know, it's their reputation on, on the line.
When you look at the clarity that's in, in the Williston document, you don't worry about the DRB anymore.
Well, that's what I, that's what I mean, it's, it just...
The DRB can do it, because the rules are very, very, they tell you exactly what should work, and so they really won't have issues with it, as long as the engineer does, you know, does his homework, brings the project in, the DRB should have no problem with it.
But you haven't discussed Willistons yet, and maybe Willistons will be the key that opens the lock, but you just decided you want to try to have a proposal.
Right.
Which I said, that won't be a big deal, but if you want to incorporate Williston, you gotta talk to them.
Starts getting to a big deal.
No, I know that, and that's why I agreed that, that we should do this as soon as we can, but not this minute.
Okay, so the interim, the interim strategy, then, is, yes, PUD process, but everything has to go through the DRB. And, and then maybe in the future, we can refine it and, and add, clarify what we mean. Is that kind of where we're, I'm just trying to understand how, you know, administratively, how this would work.
We can, but I think if, I don't think Williston's, does Williston's DRB do these?
Uh, I believe that, well, I haven't seen their amendment proposal.
I didn't read the whole thing either.
Okay.
It's pretty interesting reading.
Well, we can get more information about how they do that, but for now...
The factors, stuff that you didn't get, Kate.
Okay.
About continuity and connectivity and stuff, that's not in that, I didn't, ran out of paper.
And I think I saw something about DRB review, but are, so going back to my primary concern or initial concern, are we, even this intermediate step, knowing that we probably wouldn't get to this in any level of detail until spring, is that opening it up, opening us up, or...
Does that mean we can't, we could work on it off and on and be ready to do something?
Sure, but I'm talking about the intermediate solution. So what, what we would theoretically be discussing at the next meeting and potentially submitting a bylaw change report that gets into warning a hearing and getting DR, or getting select board approval, we're going to go down that process, and if that ends up getting adopted, is that opening us up or the DRB up to unnecessary work?
No, I don't think so. The DRB's already done these, and they've only done two or three.
Only done two or three?
Lots out in the rural district. They've done the one on...
Recently, you're talking about recently?
In the last three or four years.
Um, there haven't, there have not been a lot of subdivisions recently.
One, two that I'm aware of, one on Dorset Street Extension, and one on a corner, the sharp corner of Dorset, going to CB on the left.
So it'd be minimal. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if you're trying to get a handle on, will this mean a substantial increase in the workload on the DRB, I don't think it would be a big increase, no.
Okay.
A lot of people like their ten-acre lots.
I mean, that's, I'm figuring, but, okay.
So, Dean, I have a question about the scoring system. Is that, is, that's not part of this document, right, the scoring system?
No.
That they have, that you mentioned?
No, well, it is, this document came from that major document.
So what are the criteria on which they score?
Oh, I'm, I'm...
We had talked about Williston, and we had talked about scheduling a time sometime to go to school about Williston's growth management system, and that we hadn't gotten there, and this has sort of accelerated it. I can't rattle it off the top of my head, because I had looked at it most recently, three months ago.
Because that might have some interesting application to some of these Hamlet concepts that we've been talking about.
They do have, uh, something about...
Like, you can kind of like promote Hamlet concept using the scoring system in a sense.
I read they have a limit on Hamlets, it's either seven or nine or something.
So, and that's where the, the recommended actions in the plan that we're proposing that hopefully gets adopted and goes into effect in February would guide us towards having those discussions and really building it out in that way, which would be good. This would be an intermediate step.
So in the meantime, if Dean can dig out the scoring system criteria, that, would that be, like, wherever it's written, I'm curious to see that, like, the...
Yeah, I, I can forward you that. I'm not going to attempt any...
You know, just...
Anybody wants to go in there, you go to the Williston Unified Development Bylaw, and it'll pop right up on the screen.
And for this intermediate step, we're keeping it simple, Dean, that what we're asking for makes sense for the next packet?
If you're keeping it simple, I, that's what I've heard.
Okay. Okay. Are we good to move on? Almost have it.
Yeah.
Alright, so we can move on to comprehensive plan topics. So the draft progress. Did see the note that there was still a request for pictures and things, is that...
Yeah, she has made a request for photos, although she did get a bunch of photos, or will tomorrow.
Yeah, I have a packet, I'm gonna, I picked up from Lee by way of Dean, and I've been coordinated with her, I'm going to give her, I have a hard copy of the PDF that we, she's created thus far, with my, you know, kind of, nothing really major, but just line item edits. I mean, I just didn't really feel like, you know, it's funny, when you look at it in her document, it reads better. It's like, you know, it just, everything that just looks sort of stiff, it just somehow seems to even read better on those pages. It's amazing the power of design, right? So, you know, there's things where you're like, okay, that's a little clunky, but then you, if you start to rework, you just wonder where else do I have to rework wording? But, so there were, you know, there's some formatting stuff, there's a, some little, you know, a typo here, a little bit of wording here, there. So I have that all marked up to give to her, and she's got a few more sections she's working on.
Yeah.
So she was going to get that to you today, she said?
Yeah, well, I was going to pick up, when you were done, to say, she's, she's got one more chapter to go. I did get an email from her with a version from about, yeah, five o'clock.
Yeah.
The one chapter that has not been incorporated yet is growth and development. She's going to be, the version that I can project on the screen, and I have one, one paper, black and white copy of, she's going to be adding more of the map placeholders and photos, and she may be using some of those that she gets. And she can supply, if I press her on it, an updated version with the additional map placeholders and photos. She could do that tomorrow. And the significance of tomorrow versus any other day is that I had hoped that we would have a draft in your hands or exposed to your eyeballs, too, that you'd say, okay, we're, we're good with having that posted to the web so that we can have a link in the advertising materials so that we drive people to the meetings that are coming. And what I have that I can show you is a little bit shy of that. She said she's also planning to add some, I guess, bells and whistles or niceties or things that will make the document better after she's done this last chapter and added the photos. I did go through things quickly, and I realized that when I fed her a bunch of the photo, or map placeholders, I didn't spell it all out, and so some of them are in the wrong places. But I'm happy to walk you through this, and I can also forward it to all of you so that you look at it. I'm basically hoping, though, that since the wording isn't going to change much and the design is falling into place, that you can give a green light to posting either a tomorrow afternoon version or a Monday version, because I think that'll be better, because it'll have the edits that Andrew's giving her. And even if we, even if there are some updates, as long as they're not changing the text in a substantive way, I think it's fine. It'll be one link, and if we have a version, you know, one point zero zero, and we have a one point zero one, because it's got a couple more bells and whistles, I don't feel badly that someone downloaded zero zero as opposed to zero one, because the text will be the same. That's the thing, I would want to make sure that people are not feeling like we're playing games with them on the text. So I'm happy to walk people through it, and, and really would just want to chat afterwards about, you know, the okay to start advertising and getting people aware of the meetings.
This is just the current state of the draft?
This is the five PM today draft.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could, I, it would be awesome to keep things to time today.
Yeah.
So I don't know if going, because we, we'd been through understanding what the layout looks like and that sort of thing, so this is the, the additional sections and...
Yeah, it would really be more like wow factor, but I can email it to you all individually and...
Bring on the wow, yeah, sure.
I have emails out to Meach Cove and the Shelburne Farms, trying to get some images of solar arrays. I mean, I just, the average citizen wasn't sending me that sort of stuff. I got a lot of very, very pretty landscape images, though, so...
Yeah, like the solar orchard and that kind of thing.
Do you know Dini Gallop?
Sorry?
Dini Gallop, do you know her? She's a graphic nut, she's been around forever.
Well, I mean, I think we're, it's just for the transportation section and the energy section, there don't seem to be any apropos images. So, if anyone...
Well, I'd throw it out there. I was going to maybe take a picture on Webster Road of some people on the bike path and walking, walking and biking on the path as cars went by.
Yeah.
As a transportation.
I have a picture of someone, I think I have a picture of someone pushing somebody in a wheelchair on Bay Road, which is pretty horrifying.
So, it's currently at eighty-eight pages. And...
And that's just with that one section to go?
Uh, well, that's the one section to go, and then there's one other that isn't really being written now, that's the mechanical, how the plan conforms with the plans of the surrounding area, kind of a mechanical one.
What is the...
But I don't, I, I think you're in pretty good shape.
How many pages is the current one, current edition?
How what?
How many pages in, not this one.
The old one.
Um, volume one is something like sixty, I think.
Volume two is larger.
So, this you have seen before, the prologue, intro, and vision. Future land use is a, a new section. Yeah, it's happened. The land use, setting this age, existing land use to represent that, and the goals and objectives. And this is actually a map that's in the wrong place. Then she's got the subareas.
Does look good.
And this is the second growth area. And then the rural area, starting on page twenty. And the recommended actions in the land use summary. And that is the composite future land use holder. Natural and scenic resources, which is a long section. Lots of objectives. It does, I, I think that some of the concerns I had about the difference in the, in the, just how they structured it, they kind of dissolve with this layout. Yeah, so the natural resource section is about twenty pages, so it's pretty...
Long, because the piece I edited was fifty, somewhere between fifty-five and sixty pages, so it's probably add, she's added twenty.
Yeah. And... And you had seen...
And there's lots of single-page photos and maps, so the numbers of pages of text is actually...
Yeah.
Not an absurd number.
You'd seen rec before, you hadn't seen, I think that photo's new. Housing, you had seen...
Coach Cola.
Right, we need to...
There is.
Call somebody out?
Sweet shades, yeah.
My son and husband.
Be a star. Housing, we'd seen, childcare, we had seen, transportation, this is one where she's looking for photos. And like I said, she does sound like she's going to get the placeholder maps in.
Any train photos? There's a, there's a rail section in there, too.
Yeah, a train photo would be kind of interesting. I wonder if there are any in Lee's set.
There, like, there's a specific rail section, air.
Energy.
Yeah, it'd be interesting, get a picture of the, uh...
Rail crossing and...
Rail crossing, something around the airport.
Steve's, Stevens Architecture Firm in the background, take it from that angle.
There you go.
And that's, that's actually it, yeah. So, it's looking good.
Yeah.
I think tomorrow with...
You go back to the very beginning?
Sure.
There was little things, like, I wonder if she's even already cleaned them up, if I, um, I guess scrolled, yeah, there, so go back one page. Like, little things, like, we have goals, policies, objectives, and like, big purple font, and then recommended actions is not.
Oh, yeah, that should be.
Yeah, okay. So, I mean, those are the types of things I found, and, you know, other little, small things, but I just want to make sure that that wasn't...
Bolded anywhere.
No, it should be that.
What?
Policies would not be bolded. If, if we're consistent with the goals, objectives, and recommended actions.
Yeah, well, that's what I was...
Well, the policy, that was something that was put in when the policy and noise was added. So there hadn't been something called a policy, and so that list got longer through the addition of policies because of the policy and noise. That's why.
Okay. Are there, do we have a lot of policies?
No, that's the only one. It was added because of that.
Okay.
So, are we...
I mean, somebody could technically be looking at this and then say, oh, I'm flipping through the section... I mean, somebody could technically be looking at this and then say, oh, I'm flipping through the sections, and I'm not seeing policies anywhere. Oh, it's in this one place, but I don't think that's...
Yeah, and it makes the reference active.
Right, there's, don't hold your breath.
Well, and then there's little, like, funny little things throughout where the, I couldn't decide texturally, when you have the Pikes, Bikes Paths and Pedestrian Committee written out, and then usually in the first reference to it, you would give the parenthetical, like, you know, shorthand for it, but then the question is, should you use that acronym?
All the way through.
On-going, from there on.
What's your rule, yeah?
You know, that's sort of the general, but there are times where it just, it reads a lot cleaner when it's written out, you know? So, I just tried to put, whenever it was put in parentheses, decide where it was used first, and take it out one place, and put it there. So there are little things like that, but, you know, and then, I don't know, there's a lot of things in terms of how do we want, like, um, fractions and some things, you know, like, one-third O-N-E dash T, like, like that looked a lot better, so I just cleaned some stuff up like that. But, um, you know, probably, when this gets shared with you guys, um, if she can incorporate my stuff into it, and then share that one, you know, hopefully you got, and there'll be things you guys will notice that I probably didn't, but I tried to go through, like, with a pretty fine-toothed cone in terms of line edits. More eyes the better, in terms of catching little ticky-tack things that, you know, you might be, there's references to maps that I always circled to kind of make sure that, in fact, that was gonna be on page whatever, you know? Or there's things, like, I asked you about the transportation study, I cut that out and rewrote that piece, but, and it might be some other things like that, that now that we have a holistic view of what else is coming, that you might be like, oh, yeah, that shouldn't be referenced in there anymore. You know what I mean, like, I, I didn't know some of the details of sections I didn't write as intimately, to sort of know, uh, I don't, I'm not sure what to do there.
Sure. Yes, this looks good, though. I can, and I, and I fully agree, this is the right thing to do, is to wait until we've got a, a good reasonable draft, and then post that as, hey, this is what we're gonna be reviewing, so that people don't feel like there's games to be played or anything.
Okay.
Cool.
Still not riveting reading, it just looks a lot cooler.
Right. And transportation pictures.
Well, it's, I was surprised by how many blanks there are for images, because I've sent so many. Um, but I am making some notes about some targeted asks, that I will try to help fill in some of those. And then there may need to be some stock photographs in there.
Right, and she might have spent all her time in formatting that, and not adding pictures, because pictures can always be added...
Yeah.
Later in the game.
I may have some, I'll, I'll look through my stuff. I mean, I, I, I think I probably have some, um, photos of things where we're, I think we're doing things well, and places where there are some problems, and then I think I also may have some nice ideas of what would be nice to have, from other places, so...
That'd be great.
Yeah, that's okay, to do that.
All right.
How many submissions did you and Stephen get, out of curiosity? I mean, like dozens of...
I mostly solicited.
Dozens of...
By, from people I know who are avid photographers.
Yeah, but like, from your front porch farm posts and things, did you just get, like, random, like, oh, here's a picture?
Yeah.
Okay.
A dozen.
Yeah, I was just curious what the, you know...
I'm glad to see some of them in there, you know, people who I don't know, who just saw the post and sent me a photo, and it's a really nice picture.
Yeah, that's cool.
Great.
Oh, I should also double-check to make sure the photo credits are in there, I didn't look closely.
Um, they were, in the earlier draft, I remember.
I didn't see them on some...
There's definitely lots of areas, like, I didn't add things like captions, there's definitely areas where she's looking for captions. Some, I think, you could just not have a caption, and some you maybe could.
Or, I mean, at a minimum, just having the credit.
Right, I just think that's fun, if you're gonna bother to do this.
Yeah, so, she's got them here.
Like, there was, maybe it was natural scenic, something, it's all the haystacks and that beautiful sunset, or...
Well, Stephen here, like, so, insert caption here, insert caption here, insert caption here. I would argue, you don't need a caption there, that's just a pretty picture that...
Right.
Yeah.
There's a header for it, so...
The photo credit could be in there.
Sure, but it is, the photo credit's right there.
Yep, that's great.
That's what I'm saying, so I think there's, you'll see when you read it, there are lots of places where you're like, oh, that, in that place, it might be cool to have a caption, but a lot of them, I think you would just delete that.
Because, you know, what's, what's the, what's the significance that gets attached to the caption? I mean, unless it says nothing that you don't really need to say.
Yeah, well, like, for Kate's idea of, if she had images of things she'd like to see, you know, might say...
Aspirational housing units.
Note a caption, this is not Shelburne, but this is the type of multimodal transportation we'd be looking for, something like that. That, that would require a caption, whereas I think a lot of them don't.
Yeah.
It's the rolling hills of Shelburne.
Is that Shelburne? Is that picture from Shelburne?
What does the cap, the credit say?
It says just insert...
Oh.
Yeah.
Almost looks like Doris's street.
Something Van de Graaff?
Oh, yeah, that would be Shelburne, then. I think that's on the farm...
You know where that is, that's, um, I don't know, is that La Platte Nature?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, right, right, of course, by the post office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Cross-country course.
On a good day.
Well, that might be kind of nice to highlight, have a caption, like, this is what we have in our village.
That, I mean, where we know is...
That's how cool we are, you know?
Yeah, great. But, I mean, that's something, I don't know, do you, should you have a, good question, do we want something saying, photo of La Platte Nature area, near the center of the village? I mean, so, we would have to probably go through and write those captions.
Yeah. And maybe that's all that she had in mind is the caption.
Because the text then talks about what's really important, and what we're trying to achieve, you know, this overall vision. So I think to kind of highlight really great existing places, because, you know, I think one of the, one of the things I hope comes out of this is, you know, communicating to people that we have lots of really amazing existing assets in our town, that we should try and leverage better, you know, I, I mean, protect them, take advantage of our incredible, you know, tourism venues, and scenic resources, and, you know, it gets people more on board with, um, you know, it's like, oh, you're not, you're not taking away my development rights, you're making it hard for me to, you know, uh, do what I want with my private property, but, you know, we're working to common purpose here, to do, manage growth in a way that serves our ultimate ends, so it doesn't seem so adversarial.
In terms of the captions, is that, I'm, I'm looking at YouTube, I mean, uh, do you want to take us to app? Do you, how do you want to, I mean, I think it would, I think it would be good to have those identification captions.
Yeah.
If you feel that you can do that.
If nothing else, if we know where they are, like, that's the La Platte...
Yeah.
Part, like, having, just noting that would be cool.
Yeah, and then stylistically, how, I mean, there are captions, and then there are captions.
Right.
It could, it could be that your focus is to be as concise as you can, but, you know, she's contemplating something pretty cool.
It's like Laura Mipsom, I mean, she's just gotta, it doesn't have to be that long necessarily, it's just showing you, I think, how much space you could use if you wanted to. Like, if you scroll through the doc a little further, you can see other, um, you know, like, again, I don't, I was just thinking about this, I was reading it today and editing the last couple pieces, but like, do I need to know where that is? Or am I just, like, great picture, you know, and then I keep reading my text, so...
Yeah, and there's an editorial judgment made for every photo like that.
Right.
You know, is it the cows?
Well, then you know it's not a stock photo.
Right, and it would be cool to know, hey, this is a place that's actually...
How about as, you know, as we can?
Yes.
It's easy to do, I can be in touch with her and circle back on it.
Shelburne Farm.
Exactly, yeah.
But pretty much every photo has some sort of, um, caption area, so...
Yeah.
And then she has a few call-outs that were blank, that I didn't, um, I didn't...
Choose some.
Go into the text and try and identify, because, you know, I was waiting to see if that might evolve. But that might be the other things we need, we would have to look at as a group, is, you know, what, what little chunk do we want to pull, pull out there?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, good stuff. Should we move on to maps?
Yep.
All right, so if I can jump in, the packets included a memo from me that highlighted, um, some issues, well, not, well, just some questions that come about from the discussion last time, to have the, um, planning areas map that's used in the plan, be a modified version of what's in the current plan, right? Now, the town plan has the first map as it's shown here, but the discussion at the last meeting said, it should be expanded through the addition of the conservation areas. And what I, um, indicate is that, when you do that, it raises some questions. The, actually, go back to this. The way that the maps are currently structured, the sub-areas have, within them, conservation areas. And so this is the La Platte Nature Park, which, which shows up in the village planning area. Uh, but you can also see some of the, um, garden side, open space, as an example, in the growth area, too. And then in the rural area, you have Shelburne Farms, and the, uh, Shelburne Bay Park, and you also have the area around Shelburne Pond. The question I have is, is that, how do you, how exactly do you want to combine them? Do you, do you want to just overlay something as simple as this? Is there any desire to, to modify it for cartographic or policy purposes? I felt like I needed to bring this to you, so that the map that gets out in circulation has had at least some discussion, because you have, you haven't seen it before you have let it out into the wild. And there are some things that, um, needed to be added, because lands have been conserved recently, and presumably would go into the green, uh, category. So, for example, the area, I think I'm gonna use this. This is the bar farm, that is north and south of Pond Road. That wasn't shown up, that has not shown up in the previous version of the plan. There are places that, um, have been acquired, the land north of Boulder Hill. That should be added, I think, in some fashion, on some map, but, um, do you want this, when you were deciding, yeah, let's use the growth area map, but add to it the conservation zones, did you have in mind something like this? Does this look remotely like what you were thinking?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, okay. So then, questions that come up, um, are things like, in the past, we didn't have some of these parcels, because we didn't own them. In the past, we didn't have some of these on the maps, because I'm not sure why. So this is the parcel that is the so-called s- uh, school parcel.
Right.
Does, should that be on? There are some town parcels up north of Holcrest. Should they be added? Should Holcrest Park, I, I've, as I looked at this, I thought of these as being more resource lands, and I actually don't think of Holcrest Park as a natural resource land, um...
Why don't you have, why don't, why don't we call them something like conserved and dedicated open space, or recreational space? To me, this looks, this is a foundation for coming up with a paths map, a pedestrian paths map, that...
I'm just gonna grab my notes here.
Could be, you know, uh, provide some off-road access, and create a network of, um, of trails. Um, I mean, I know the status of the conserved areas is, I mean, this is not necessarily land that is owned by this town, right? These are places that we have an easement on, or something, right? It's not...
Um, well, it's like I said in my memo, there are several different categories. Town-owned parcels, parcels such as those owned by the Nature Conservancy, and, um, and UVM, although UVM, sometimes there is a conservation easement held by TNC. Um, and then there are privately owned lands where Vermont Land Trust holds an easement, although the map that we've had in the past is not consistent. We've, we've had categorized, um, in the earlier versions of the plan, lands like the open space that was part of the, um, uh, was called, well, it was originally called Swenson. And that's a parcel that's an open space lot for this subdivision, and the Vermont Land Trust has an easement on it. There's also a parcel that's New Village Farm, that has been categorized, because at that time, the principle was, oh, Vermont Land Trust easement, it will be green on the map. But we're not consistent, there are actually Vermont Land Trust easements in here, there are Vermont Land Trust easements north, and I can show you where those are. So I just want to make sure that there's some understanding and comfort with what's shown on the map, because we haven't always been consistent. And, um, so the questions that I had in the memo, you know, should town parcels, such as the parcels here, this is south of Davis Park, town-owned, I kind of thought, yeah, why not? Um, and then, as I said, the school parcel, should that be included? Do you want to call that conservation? And potentially, that could lead to zoning district changes?
Does the school still have designs on that property?
Short answer is, I don't know certainly, but I don't think they do, a lot of it's wetland. It could be sold, and I, my understanding is, is that, um, whoever donated it to, I believe it was as a result of a bequest, um, it had to be used for either a school or houses. And so it could be attractive to a residential developer, but like I said, a lot of it's wetland, so you'd have to work around the wetlands. I'm just thinking of some others, other, uh, yeah, these are, these are two parcels that are town-owned, that are just kind of sitting in the middle, between Martindale and Old Orchard. They don't really get any town management, but I'm sure there are refuge for wildlife on, on a scale of the neighborhood.
Well, does this come down to the definition of what conservation land is?
Well, if you look at the Natural Resources Committee, their, their map, um, I'm just trying to think of the quickest way to do this. Let's see if, uh, that's... They have, um, okay, so, the Natural Resources Committee has historically used these levels, um, that are shown here. Publicly owned, private conservation, and that would be things like Audubon, Vermont Land, oh, sorry, more like TNC. They've also lumped in UVM. Easements, those would be cases where the land is privately owned, and it's typically an ag easement. Uh, but it would also include places like the Zen Center parcel, which is, um, not Vermont Land Trust, it is the Lake Champlain Land Trust. And then, um, associations, the, the lowest level of protection in the Natural Resources Committee's worldview are pieces of land that they're restricted as a result of a, um, a development of approval. So, for example, the Ridgefield Open Space, along the west side of Route 7, that's the open space parcel. And indeed, it may be more protected than just a zoning approval, but it's seen in their eyes as the least protected, so they use this category. Association lands have not been included on the maps that I just showed you, historically. It's been something, generally speaking, although not always, um, they've been left off. And there's an, there's an exception to that, which is the area, um, here. Uh, for reasons, I'm not really sure, the garden side open space and the, um, open space next to it, those have been shown in green on the map. Um, there are also some quirks. Over here, the, this boundary shows, um, a combination of lands that are conserved by Vermont Land Trust, Nature Conservancy, UVM, and then there's this area that looks kind of like a buffer. Well, it's because there's a thousand-foot setback from the pond. So that one's kind of driven by what was the zoning a long time ago. Then there are places where it seems that there was consideration of wetlands, it's the only place in the map. And then, I went back and I researched it, and it goes back many, many years, into the pre-2000. Um, the, the boundary of this area has been shown as conservation, and I, only thing I can explain it is as wetland.
It looks like a bay wetland from the aerial map.
That's where 116...
But it's the only place where wetland boundaries, uh, yeah. Yeah. And so some of the boundaries don't make sense, but I, I'm not suggesting that they be modified. I just can't explain them. But there are places, like I say, that things have been omitted. So would you want to add them? And I'm gonna zoom in over here or draw your attention to Shelburne Farms because there has been a little bit of history. And maybe if I explain the history enough, that will satisfy people. The, where did the browser go? Did that window close? Boy. Uh, let's see. So, yeah. As you can see here, this area, easement lands, and I can tell you that it's from the Vermont Land Trust, or those are lands under Vermont Land Trust. So there's a lot of land that's not shown in green. And so if we're using the Vermont Land Trust easements as the principle, then should, should there be modifications made? I didn't put them on this map, and here's why. Several years ago, the boundaries of the conservation district in this area were different, and I think they more closely resembled the easements, but they certainly didn't include everything. And the Vermont, oh, I'm sorry, Shelburne Farms requested that what is shown as conservation line up with the PUD that covers Shelburne Farms. So there's a PUD approval that covers some, but not all, of Shelburne Farms. So it's, it's a weird boundary that's based on a zoning approval rather than the easement.
So the easements can't be developed on, right?
Well, ag easements can be. They're just, you know, they're, they can be used for barns and other outbuildings. In many cases, there's a reserve right for up to one house. So they can be developed to some extent.
But, but I think the virtue of this map that you're developing on the right is that it shows, it's a snapshot of what you can expect in different parts of the town. So, you know, the red is growth area one, the yellow is growth area two, the white is the rural area. And then the places that are green are places that you can expect will not be developed either commercially or with housing. And so that's why I would think that we would want to put those association lands on because they're, regardless of, you know, how strict the, whatever the arrangements are, they're, they're not going to be something that will be developed. This is just a sort of snapshot of what, you know, how this relates to the text that people are seeing. So I would think that to make it as simple as possible, even if it's not really comprehensive, it just gives people a...
Well, I think, is this the one on the left, up there anyway, the Natural Resources Part Two conserve lands, that will also be included in the plan, correct?
Yep.
So I mean, yeah, I like the idea of having a kind of catch-all here. And you could have a note on this map saying, you know, detail of the green can be found on such and such a map, you know, so.
Okay.
If people need to understand how that green breaks down into all the subtypes.
Because I would think it would raise more questions like, well, why is the purple not on there? You know, if that's considered, has some degree of, of, what does that mean? You know, association, does that not count somehow? I mean, I think it's, it's, like, to look at that, I, I can look at that map and know, I can expect that there will be something that I would recognize as urban on some scale in the parts that are red and the parts that are yellow. But in the parts that are green, I would know that those are not, those have been removed from that for some reason.
Okay. So I, I can update this so that it adds the association lands or what are shown on this other map as association lands and show them the same as everything else. I was anticipating you might be thinking along those lines. You can perhaps see, this thing is kind of dying. And there are patches of lighter mustard color that, this, for example, this is, no, this is the Ridgefield Open Space.
Right.
So, you know, I was thinking, if you were asking, well, where would that be relative? Well, it's actually shown in this slightly off color.
And what about all the Meach Cove stuff? Isn't a lot of that preserved in some way?
No.
No, none of it is at all?
No. Not to my knowledge.
And that's where, I mean, just in hearing this conversation, we talked about this last time, that when it comes time for developing a particular parcel or if anybody's really doing some sincere investigation on where they can, where they can build or what they can do, they're gonna come in and there's gonna be more detail to get into. A map like this, to me, shows, well, here's a snapshot of all of the conserved lands. And what is the definition of conserved land? And you could have that in there to say this, like agricultural use notwithstanding, these are areas that can't be developed on or that are protected in some way. And that just shows, well, this is how the town is taking these things to be important, that we want to conserve things.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, when I made this map, it was just another reminder, wow, yeah, there's a lot of stuff that's under protection.
What about the cemetery?
Well, that is a, like I said, I was, I was approaching this because of the history that it is town-owned lands where it's some conservation and wildlife. I didn't include the water tower, I didn't include Davis Park, you know, the rec area and the first go-round, so.
I would add all that stuff in.
You want to add every town parcel? So what about the highway garage and the sewer treatment plant? And do you want those as conservation?
Well, just, just places that you can't, you can't, you can't, they're not developable as, as...
Because we have policies in the plan that talk about these areas.
But if any, if the town decided that we wanted to update a garage or something like that, I mean, it's technically, it's still developable.
You could sell the school and build on it, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, well, how about like the recreation part? The recreation feels associated with the school, maybe not the school itself, but the recreation facilities associated with that.
Are they actually conserved or are they just things that don't have things built on them now?
They're protected, they're not conserved.
Right. I mean, this is to provide, just, I thought this was to provide like a snapshot of where people can expect, you know, development to potentially occur and where people can expect development not to be.
Right, and I guess I would just challenge that a little bit, that if, I mean, having a school and its fields on that map, somebody could be wanting to build something where my house is, and I would say, well, no, because I own that spot. Like, no, you can't build on the school property because it's school, but it's not conserved land. It's just, there's other restrictions. Or am I missing the, because didn't we have another, there was gonna be another map that showed town resources and that sort of thing? This would be more of what is actually conserved.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a map that's in the future land use section, which is the broad strokes of the future land use vision. And, and it's, it has in the past been a map that shows the growth area. So least growth, moderate growth, and the core area. I mean, that's what the hierarchy has been. And the conservation areas got shown in the individual subparts and then came together in the future land use map. This is, this is kind of combining, well, it is combining two maps. It's showing the growth areas plus conservation. And conservation wasn't really clearly defined, isn't it? And so you do have questions, and that's why I said, you know, in the memo, should the school parcel be added? I think I heard people say yes.
Yeah, well, now, my, my comment on that was yes, if it falls under whatever our definition of conservation is. And I'm open, completely open to that, but I don't know that...
I think the clarity here is like you increase the information entropy. If you add like town assets and new legend, a different color for those buildings like schools and...
Yeah, I don't think you should be breaking down the green into some categories on this map on the right.
New thing in this, what says...
At this scale in particular.
But at a new point, like you don't want to declare those as conservation areas, right? So there is no legend in this figure, the new one that you have. That would be a combined legend from your previous figure.
Well, we'll, we'll make the legend when we decide on what the, the map's gonna show.
Right, and in your previous figure, you had like growth area one, growth area two.
Yeah.
Then there's rural area and I think, so you'll have to declare green color as conservation.
We'll have to make the, we'll have to make the...
Why don't you just add association lands and be done with it? And then don't worry about all the other minutia. And that'll provide, it's just to provide a broad brush, you know? Of like, you know, in Shelburne, we have places where we have growth and places that are rural and places that we conserve. And we look at how much we've conserved, you know, we're all about conservation here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm certainly...
Because that sets the stage, if you notice, that the predominant, you know, the most of the places that the green is surrounded by rural, right? So that sets the stage for saying, and this is why, you know, we protect our rural lands. You know, so, I mean, it's, it's just to set the stage for building, you know, the vision that you're trying to portray.
Yeah. I can put on the association lands and that, and I can...
I think that makes sense because then it makes it consistent with that Natural Resources Part Two map, which is gonna be included, right?
That's in there as well, yes.
Yeah.
Because I know with older hill, we have a little chunk that's association land and...
Yeah, there are little, there are little pieces. When, when we open it up to the association, there are little pieces and strips and, yeah, it does get...
So in the south side where it says river, around the river, those areas are not conserved yet, right? I mean, it points out that...
Down in here?
Yeah.
Where?
The bottom side.
In the southern boundary, like where the, just, just green one patch, right? That's the flat, flat river.
Yeah, so this arrow I see through here.
So those are not conserved, right? It seems like that's open to development.
Well, it's rural, yeah.
So this is, this is an area that doesn't have any, I mean, this is the Zen Center. This is land that's part of the O'Brien parcel.
Yeah.
Actually, boy, you know, I need to, that reminds me, there may be a parcel that is the Dietrich parcel? That might have been conserved by the Lake Champlain Land Trust. But it's...
I think there was something, that's, that is springing.
Yeah. So adding association lands, adding, basically bringing across the association lands and the easement lands onto the green. Okay. I will say that, I mean, I think that this will generate a fair amount of discussion, including from parties like Shelburne Farms, possibly others, but...
Well, that's what the open comment is for.
Sure, but I think that's also why it's important to explain what the definition of conserved means. I mean, we could say that, that this map, what is in green, and maybe we want to use a term other than conserved to be more neutral. But basically to say that that includes private conservation, public lands, easement lands, and association lands. And then that hopefully would alleviate any pressures from Shelburne Farms.
Right, so when you hit in the legend, you write conservation, sorry.
Yeah.
You can put like a star underneath there.
Yeah, and explain what that means.
Because that's, it's shown as association lands up on the other map. So it's just, it's just a, it's just to, to create a broader, just like we're not showing all of the zoning districts in Growth Area One and Growth Area Two on this. It's just the big picture.
Right.
You're not showing the subparts of the Growth Area Two, but in a sense, you're showing everything that is conservation in some form.
And is that what some of that light yellow is then? That's all?
Right, the light yellow will be the association lands.
Yeah.
So it's gonna, it's gonna make Growth Area Two seem... And if I, and if I do include things like cemeteries, if we're saying all of the cemeteries, then that's gonna start to break up the Growth Area One as well.
Well, and, yeah, I, I don't know how many caveats we want to put into this description, but this, this is designed to be a high-level map. I mean, again, anybody that's doing any development or doing any work is gonna need to get much more detailed than this. No, no one's gonna look at this map and then say, oh, I can't do that because it's green. I wouldn't think. But it would give them an idea of where to focus their questions or who to talk to to get more detail.
Because if you consider a cemetery as, as development, I mean, it's, you know, it's development with, with graves, right?
Similar to the school, like it's a, it's a thing.
It's a public, it's an institute, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Did that answer all the questions that you had in this section?
So it's, it's yes, yes, yes. And is there anything on there that should be taken out?
I think so.
And then you did have, didn't you have the one, should the, that area be added in the Growth Area Two?
Oh, yes, thank you for bringing that to my attention, yes. There is a quirk that I mentioned in my memo that is basically related to how there's this mistake in the boundary for the Growth Area and the Sewer Service Area and Beaver Creek. So the lots along the eastern side of the road are part of Beaver Creek development. They have access to the town sewer, but they were lopped off, the Sewer Service Area. And it seems kind of silly to continue to exclude them and classify them as rural when...
Were they on there once?
Sorry?
Were they on there once?
Were they on there?
Were they on?
Oh, no, near as I can tell, that that map has always lopped them off.
I mean, just reading that, it seems like, yes, they should be included because by definition, Growth Area Two is the sewer coverage area.
Makes a question come up on the easement that was granted a couple of years ago.
Which?
The one that went south to, I think, the owner of the quarry.
Well, there, there is, there's association land that's part of Beaver Creek that's gonna bring in this parcel.
That'll be granted on some kind of a line to go through, maybe it was just water. It went across the road south.
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
It was a while ago, it's probably five years ago.
I think I remember something about that.
They said that they had a grant or an easement from the earlier Beaver Creek subdivision, and I believe it was granted. And I don't remember if it was just water or sewer and water.
Well, again, Beaver Creek is part of the reason, the reason why it's in the Growth Area is because it was given sewer access.
Right.
And so it's served by sewer, and there are, McFarm also has sewer. And maybe what you're talking about, Dick, is a sewer line across this green portion to the Demers lots.
Where are you?
There might have been something like that, but...
Where's the Demers lot?
The, the Demers lots are this, it's this knife blade shaped, it's just on the east side.
Okay, yeah, I think that might be it.
That may be what you're talking about. I'm not suggesting that you do, you adjust the boundary to include that.
Right, I was just curious about that.
I think as a general rule, if Growth Area Two includes the sewer coverage area, then anything that's in the sewer coverage area should be part of Growth Area Two.
Then you change the zoning though. If you went south, you would be changing the zoning if you include it in the Growth Area.
Yeah, I mean, there are, there are all kinds of implications if you were to say, well, as long as it has technical access to the sewer, it should be in the Growth Area because there are parts of Shelburne Farms, that I think there are parts of Meach Cove that technically have some legal right to connect to our sewer that are not included in the Sewer Service Area. And so there was a big, I mean, when the Sewer Service Area battle was fought, it was a pretty intense battle and the boundaries were fixed. I, I mentioned the one with Beaver Creek just because it, it seems like a glaring mistake that doesn't really raise any policy issues like saying, well, if every area that could technically have a legal claim to sewer access has that access, then we should expand the boundaries because that's gonna mean figuring out what that, how that applies to Meach, how that applies to Shelburne Farms.
Yeah, but it seems like just like an oversight, someone drew it along the road, not realizing there were lots on the other side of the road.
It's what I thought.
Yeah. I mean, it looks like from looking at the map, it's three houses?
I think so, three or four. Ah, yeah, three in an open space portion.
Yeah.
All right, so at least expanding that on the official, or on this map. All right, so at least expanding that on the official, or on this map in that case.
Okay.
Then, um, does that wrap up maps? I think that was all the questions, are there any other questions or comments? So the, uh, plans for public input?
Um, I have spoken with the town clerk, who is the person who's coordinating getting a, a space at Shelburne Day, so that is firming up the plans for Shelburne Day. Uh, this, the tent or space will be, I'm guessing would be shared, uh, so we would have an opportunity to display materials relating to the town plan and also for historic preservation and design review, possibly also natural resources. So that's coming together. Really, the issue with the public input sessions comes down to getting the document in the shape that you feel it should be in for us to post and then blast the advertising. And it sounds like we're close to that as of Monday, and, um, it will be the big effort to do that. We've just, we've established that we'll have a quorum, you'll be calling in, um, the afternoon session that will be informal, will be something that people don't, I don't expect commissioners themselves to, um, we'll have light refreshments.
Yeah, that was, I was curious, what's, where's, where's that, the 3 to 5, that would be?
That would be here as well.
Okay, and it's?
It's essentially to give an opportunity to people, for people who couldn't come during evening hours and also before the cameras are on, so to speak. And one of the things I had said last time is, is I, I thought of seeding it with certain questions like childcare or daycare, because one of the things I could possibly do is try to invite representation from those groups, um, just a more intimate conversation about them. But it doesn't mean that it's gonna be limited to those things, but it's really to give more hours.
But who would, if we aren't here from
I would be here.
It'd just be you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think that'll be a lot of people, but it's to have the materials, you know, we're gonna be encouraging people to download the document, it's not gonna work for everybody.
Right.
So having the paper, limited paper production here, having, um, things projected or printed out, I'm gonna see what would seem to make the most sense to have printed out by Pam Brangin, the Regional Planning Commission.
And I think as long as we say with the caveat that this is not final form, there's still some tweaks being done, but the core language is what we're moving forward with, so it's a reasonable draft.
I mean, we're, we're compressing, we're compressing a lot. I, I think some of the message would be that this wasn't, this wasn't written from scratch, there was existing plan that's been in place that was modified. That's, I think that's an important message, and parts were updated substantially, but the core is a document that has been serving the town for a while. We'll want to give some people an orientation, so there'll be need for some kind of brief presentation for the sections that will be discussed, but I don't think that it should last more than like 10 minutes. And then we try to get people to comment both on the document and just share their ideas if they haven't spent a lot of time reviewing it. Because there'll be some folks that'll just say, well, I believe this, and this is what I want, and this is what's important, and we'll take all of that down. It may be hard to translate into specific edits, but we should give people that chance.
And so the 3 to 5 session and 7 to 9 session will cover the same material?
The idea is the same, yeah.
Or the same general focus, half the document and the other half the next time.
Yeah, and if people had suggestions for breaking it out differently, let me know. I kinda thought that the grouping made some sense. How did, where's that listed again?
It's on the core text page, you keep looking.
Page 27.
If you have page numbers. Yeah, it's, it's this guy, it's right after, when you get into the section.
Right, yeah, so, um, overall vision, future land use, natural resources, growth, rec, childcare, and, um, you know, it's, it's got a, resources and, and growth bent, um, transportation, historic, housing, facilities, energy, telecom, more of the stuff, human impact stuff.
Yeah, and I think the, the flyer text looked good as well.
Yeah.
So Dean, how many people typically you expect, like in the past?
There's no typical, I mean, so
Good question.
So there, there were some events that were planned, you know, uh, for the plan in the early 2000s, we had, we had a series of sessions, one was called Data Night, we had, we had a room full of people. I don't expect that here. I mean, I think that if we had a dozen to 20 people who were really interested in it, that would be a win.
We had 12 for form-based zoning, something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
One was me. Did you get your answers?
I did, actually, that was good, there were some good sessions.
Any other questions around this?
No, no, just other, other business or updates.
Okay, so we don't do updates, and I figured, Kate, because I think you have something, do you wanna do that under Commissioner Comments? The, um, I'm blanking on it, but the
Oh, the, I just sent, yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
And my main one was just about the process for the 3 to 5 versus 7 to 9, and if we should be here, should we not?
I mean, if you can be here, I think that would be great, but it wasn't
Yeah, I mean, I think I could come, I've gone on the second one, but on the first one, I could come for at least the first hour, maybe even hour and a half, 3 to like 4, 3 to 4:30 potentially. I may have an issue with the 23rd too.
Well, it may be the similar thing, we'd miss two people on the next meeting and then two people on the one after.
Right.
As long as it's just you two. So did, did you have any updates?
Yeah, so along these same lines, um, you and I had made a brief presentation to the Select Board a while back, and I'd been keeping tabs on, or helping Lee keep tabs on this issue, and since we'll have a document that the public will see and that we also want Select Board members to react to, because remember, we've got so little time built in at the end. So I have asked Lee to reserve time at the August 14th meeting, that's their next opportunity where we can update them, the plan will have, the document will have been out on the street, but it's an opportunity to reinforce the idea that the document's there and we're, August is our public input month, please look at it and provide comments. So August 14th, participation from commissioners would be welcome.
Yeah, I think that's the, I think I'm flying back that night, I don't think I'll land until 10:00. If I can adjust that, I could, see if I could come in earlier and be there.
It's possible. That would be at 7:00, our meeting?
Yeah, I would hope that they would schedule it for the early part of the meeting, and that, I don't control that, but I would hope that they would put it early.
Right.
All right, and I, and I can follow up on what my potential availability might be.
Uh, somewhat related, I sent out an email, I think at least to you, the Select Board is starting the capital planning process, updating of the capital plan. At some point, because of the statute, the Planning Commission will have to be given a chance to review the capital plan and hold a meeting on it, so heads up, I don't know when we'll get it, what sort of shape it will be in, but
And, and I looked at that, that was also a request, if there were any particular things to
On how to, right, ideas for it, and the plan, I mean, to my way of thinking, the recommendations in the plan are very much the source of that.
Right.
There was a really great email that was from one of the members of the PaaS committee that was circulated about, um, considering doing what South Burlington is doing, where they have a penny on, is it a penny on the property tax, is it?
It's a penny for, well, penny for PaaS proposal, which I think
Penny for PaaS, something, yeah, I don't, I can't remember the details of it, but, but that that would, as, as a way to, to just start to create some funds for, um, pedestrian and physical facilities. So I thought that was kind of a neat idea.
Yeah, I saw the sign, I see the signs every time I drive up and down doors of Tranger Spear Street, and they're voting on the 14th, right? Be interesting to track their success or failure.
Yeah. Because one of, you know, one of the things that stalls a lot of these projects is, you know, we end up needing to provide matching funds if we get a grant, and then the Select Board decides, oh, we, you know, we don't have whatever it is, you know, 15, $20,000 to, to pay for that, so this would be, you know, and then things get delayed, you know, some critical bottleneck that, you know, like, for example, the little spit of sidewalk between the town offices and the bridge to the Shelburne Museum, you know, that was delayed by several years, just one example, because, you know, it, it was tough to come up with the matching funds, you know, it just wasn't a priority. So, you know, it's just like, how do you, you know, these things erode quality of life, you know, how, how do we circumvent that?
Yeah.
And similar issue with the Conservation Fund as well, where they ask for a certain amount each year, but
Yeah, so they do it through a ballot item, so, you know, maybe
It was higher, quite a bit higher several years ago, I think it was, I don't know if it was done something similar to this, a penny or two, in that, at that time, the board determined they were getting too much money.
Well, I know Historic Preservation wants their own fund potentially.
Cut it back down to, I think it was $10,000 at one point.
Yeah, they've, HPDRC has kind of backed away from that idea, although they were just discussing it pretty intensely, um, a while ago, and, yeah, you're right, the natural, the Open Space Fund did have a penny on the tax rate for, I think, one year or maybe two, and it was raising something around $90,000. So that was the, that was the heyday as far as the Open Space Fund.
Yeah.
All right, um, good with updates?
Um, the other thing maybe as our other business, I'm going to be sending an email out to all of you with some information about the so-called Municipal Planning Grant Program, and it's really to just ask everyone for ideas, um, so that, so that I can assemble them and they can be discussed at the next meeting. What, if the town was to apply for a municipal planning grant, it seems like we're due to get one, what should be the subject of that grant application? In the past, the last application was for the survey and focus groups for the plan, and we didn't get that. The one before that might have been for a build-out study. So given where we are in the scheme of things, what would be a logical subject for a planning grant application that would be, um, would be worked on after you get the plan update? Could be zoning changes, but it would be great, or it could be something else, so
One thing I noticed, I mean, I don't know, the timing's probably off for this, one thing I noticed, when you read the plan, the thing that looks glaringly bad are our maps.
Well, those are placeholders, yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, so is she gonna design?
No, she's not designing them, but we'll, when we get the, when we have nailed down the what we want, then we'll be working with Pam and the Regional Planning Commission to get it consistent. And actually, that was something that I had meant to bring up last time, I'll be circulating then, um, just basically I'll do a poll for what the base map should look like, whether or not it should be something, would you like to see most of the maps on an aerial photo base? Would you like to see them on, um, just kind of a standard, like highway map base? Would you like it to be something a little bit more stylish, kind of gray with white roads, or, anyway, I'll give you some options, because there are some default base maps that can be used when we make these maps. And it'd be good to know what taste people have. You know, if we, Sean, who made these maps for the Natural Resources Committee, could, could do them again if we said, hey, you know, we would like it to be on this base rather than some other base.
I mean, I much prefer the aerial photo-looking map than
Than roads?
The blank white, yeah, I mean, I mean, because it captures
Oh, yeah, they would, right.
It captures it all, I mean, it just gives you a clearer sense of where, I don't know, forest is and woods and, you know, pick up a lot more.
I would agree.
And does that kind of segue into the, what we were gonna, what you were gonna bring up around the potentially discussing form-based zoning at that?
Yes, so I reached out with, in an email to the woman who is coordinating selection of, uh, possible projects to be reviewed. This is something that is put together by the, um, Burke and, Burke and White, is it Burke and White or White and Burke?
White and Burke.
White and Burke. They're a land development, um, and consulting firm, and they, I, I, I don't know how long they've been doing this or, or that much about it, but apparently they were offering to, um, potentially to choose a project that could be sort of evaluated by, you know, between 40 and 75 land use development-related professionals, and to just give feedback on, you know, what they thought about this and the merits of this project, and, and they were offering this as a, as an idea for municipalities to consider if they had something. And, um, so I thought of the Route 7 Form-Based Code project, and just to kind of, you know, since we've adopted it, um, well, first of all, you know, we have, it hasn't been the success that we hoped it would be, I think we have some, you know, growing ideas of why that may be the case, you know, it's not, it's, it's only an optional overlay, so, you know, that kind of undermines the predictability that is a big selling point or was supposed to be a big selling point of the, um, this type of zoning. But also, um, you know, it was predicated on having a lot of retail uses, and we all know what's happened to retail in the last couple of years, so, um, you know, we kind of have to, um, you know, recalibrate and, and, um, you know, what, what could we do, you know, and do they have some ideas about, um, you know, we, we were thinking that, that, you know, kind of enhancing, um, a sense of place and identity was very important. Is, is that as important as we think in that kind of a setting? I, I don't know, you know, I mean, just, it just seems like this is a, a very much of a moving target, and I am wondering if the assumptions that we based our initial code on are still valid, or if we should be sort of thinking about different directions to go in. I think Brandy did, Brandy and her team did some really great work on, you know, the stormwater and things like that, but now this is kind of more the marketing. And then just to get some ideas, like, how do we actually sell this, you know, what are some things that we can do that, to be more effective about that?
It'd be a great opportunity for feedback from that group, if we get selected.
So, and so it's about, I think it's like, um, it's like an hour and a half or something that they donate their time, hour and a half, maybe even two hours, so if we can get it, I think would be, be great.
And what's the process to be selected?
Um, I think you, you, I just sent a sort of letter of interest in, in an email and described the project, and I attached some, um, documentation, you know, so, you know, a link to the code and just things like that, um, and just said, we, I hoped that we would be considered, so they got back and said, um, you know, thank you, and this sounds very interesting, and we'll let you know, so, who knows?
Cool.
But keep you posted.
Yeah, sounds great.
Free advice is, uh, free professional advice is always
Absolutely.
Worth getting if you can.
Any other questions or comments before moving on? All right, um, other business, correspondence, anything from you? Now, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Kate?
Second.
Second by Andrew, all right, thank you.